Okay, it's six o'clock, we might as well get rolling. Ally, if you would call the roll.
Fred Mallow.
Here.
Doug Goldsmith.
Yes.
Beth Schumaker.
Yes.
There, Jane Johnson is excuse, Sam Cobrick.
Present.
Kevin Handyam. Alright, you have four of them.
Okay, we'll proceed with the Chris, uh, consent agenda. I'll turn my mic on. I thought we reviewed the minutes from the May meeting, but I guess we didn't.
You did review them, but we forgot to make a motion to approve them.
Oh, okay, so.
Yeah, that was kind of my fault.
Does, does everybody remember the May meeting minutes? If you do, I moved that we, uh, here's Chris. I moved that we approved the, the meeting minutes from, uh, May nineteenth.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Ally. Next, we'll move on to the meeting minutes from the June sixteenth meeting. Have we all read them? Here's Kevin.
Wow, look at us, we're all here.
That's alright, we haven't gotten very far. I move that we approve the minutes from the, uh, June sixteenth meeting. All those in favor, oh, somebody second.
I second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's taken care of. I see nobody here from the public. So we will proceed right into the Board of Trustees, uh, update, that's you, Chris.
Um, I don't think I have much to report, we haven't had, uh, too much of a, uh, busy month, really, uh, waiting for our new town manager to get, get in the seat, uh, on the fifth of August, I believe, um.
But that's exciting.
But that's exciting.
That was since our last board meeting.
I guess so, maybe it was, yeah, and, um, yeah, uh, among, I mean, all the candidates expressed a lot of, um, admiration and interest in our sustainability policies and practices at the town, and, um, he's no exception, so. Looking forward to having him introduce himself to you, I assume, at some point, and.
Is there anything that stood out to you about what he would want to take on? Did he express any of that, or is it more of a learning game to begin with?
I think it's a learning game to begin with, I think, for us, um, his experience around doing sort of project management, um, and some of the things that are often considered sort of extracurricular to the day-to-day management of the town in terms of just HR and stuff like that, um, and so in particular, the, the Town Center project and affordable housing goals. Um, we're hoping he can bring some good experience working with public-private partnerships and, you know, boots, having the experience of being boots on the ground, building a project in Silverthorn, he comes from Silverthorn, and, um, he developed this project with the town and a private developer to essentially create from scratch a, you know, semblance of a downtown for this town that had just been a stop on the highway before that, so. I don't know if anyone's been, I haven't been through the, been to see it, but it's pretty cool, um, I've seen some pictures, they took a historic, the, the old Dillon Inn, which was a historic structure that had been moved, I think, three or four times before that, um, from, I think, from a mining town up in the hills down to Dillon, and then, uh, and then it was at the bottom of the reservoir, so, so they moved it out to Frisco or something, and then it ended up finally in Silverthorn. But, uh, it was like a completely dilapidated structure without any sort of insulation or anything of the sort, so they kind of came up with this creative idea of just putting it inside of another building. So there's this large food hall now that includes this historic structure inside of it, which there, the final piece of the pro, of that part of the project is, uh, you know, completely restoring the interior of this bar, which is kind of similar, the interior kind of reminds me of the poorhouse or something like that with all kinds of artifacts and stuff all over the walls, so. Um, yeah, and, um, I think there are more components to the project in sort of the housing side of it, but not super familiar. Otherwise, Scott can probably talk more about water and things like that, I'll let him, he knows more about it, so.
All done?
I think so, unless you, unless anything comes up, I can jump in.
Yeah, yeah, feel, feel free to jump in, um, let's see, so speaking of water, I'll start with that one, um. The, if you saw the press release, uh, that we put out, that we had a mechanical breakdown on the Nettle Creek plant, um, well, actually on the main line that comes down from Nettle Creek Plant, so that had us, uh, pretty low water for about two weeks, a little over two weeks, um, so we got that repaired, we're back up to, uh, normal operations. However, Nettle Creek is down a little bit, um, not down historically, this is typical of drought years. Um, it kind of gets to a baseline of around three hundred and eighty gallons per minute, and that's where we're sitting at. Um, and it's been pretty typical, if you look back at our records, twenty eighteen and twenty twelve, no, twenty twenty-five. Um, so what that means, though, is that we are, uh, we don't have a whole lot of extra capacity in our system at the moment, so we do want to continue, um, recommending people to conserve water to their best of their ability, limit outdoor irrigation during the day, things like that, so if you want to help keep spreading that word around to your network, that would be great. Um, but no need to go into mandatory restrictions or anything yet, so that's what we're keeping an eye on. Um, other water things, we finally have, our driller has shown up, um, mobilized last week to start replacing, uh, Roaring Fork Well Number One that failed back in February, oh, failed before that. November, December, I believe, so that's how long it's taken just to get a driller to show up. It's been, been rough, um. So that's cool, we're going to start replacing that well, and hopefully we'll be back online in, um, takes about six weeks for the state to approve the well once it's drilled, so hopefully we'll get, get that up and running about six weeks. Um.
Where is that one?
It's right next to the Roaring Fork River, so if you go out Blue Heron Lane, if you know where that's at, um, kind of as you're going towards the rodeo, right down next to the river. Um, let's see, and then, similar, similar to, or, uh, related to the Roaring Fork Well, uh, we're planning on going out to bid for our filter project at the Roaring Fork Treatment Plant. Um, hoping to go out to bid in August, we're getting close to having bid documents for that, um, with planned construction in winter, um, and that will be great, it's going to simplify our treatment plant, um, by a lot, so. Looking forward to making that pro, uh, getting that project off the ground, and then, the, the last utilities-related thing I have here, and I have a couple of those minor things. Um, good news is, we are making progress with the hydro plant, it is the project that keeps on giving, let me tell you. Um, we did get Pittkin County Electrical, uh, to sign off on it, so we're good there. We got Holy Cross to install our meter and install pow, so we have power connection, interca, interconnect. This is our, those are huge steps, um, and so, I don't know if I told you about this last time, but we had a, like this hydro-specific mechanical contractor out that was helping us fix things that weren't properly specified, um, or delivered previously. Uh, well, they found another problem, um, the bearings in the whole system are not rated for the type of install they are. So we are shooting to run this thing enough to get it fully commissioned, tested enough that we don't have any other problems, and then we're going to tear it all out and go fix the bearings, so. Uh, it is, yeah, it has been, it's been something else, let me tell you. So that's it for my utility projects, the other thing, I just checked in with, uh, Kevin Shoresman this morning just to see if there's anything else. He said I should bring up, uh, he just said to mention that the pool received the one hundred, one hundred thousand dollar core grant. Um, so I believe that's going well, and is in alignment with our goals, speaking of the goal setting here. And Chris already mentioned the town manager, I was going to mention that too. And one other thing was the tactical urbanism feedback has been sent out, if you all haven't seen that, um, just jump on the website and scroll down, there's a link to it right there. Um, that's about all the temporary installations for bike and pedestrian infrastructures in general, trying to slow traffic down, so. Um, you've probably seen a lot of those little, uh, mastic barrier, barriers, uh, ballards put up, so. Definitely provide feedback, I think the more feedback, the better on that one.
You tend to get positive feedback as well as negative feedback.
I have not seen any of it, um.
Yeah, we've gotten both, quite a bit of both, positive and negative, so.
That's good.
Mostly pertaining to the roundabout at Myers Park, Barbara Drive intersection.
Yeah.
I have a comment, but I'll wait, I'll fill out my survey.
I think in general, most people don't like change and can't really understand that this is a temporary trial thing. It's my general perspective, um, so it's easier to get negative feedback than positive.
But we have gotten positive, quite a bit of positive feedback, and I would say also the map plan was a years-long, uh, exercise in public ga, gathering, so there's a certain amount of, um.
Buy-in.
Buy-in on that level at least, um, but yeah, for specific projects, I think it does come down to the details of how it's accom, how it gets executed as to whether it's successful or accepted, so.
What I've heard is, okay, the posts, you can run over them, not, uh, any problem. But, uh, what about the, the flower plants, the?
I don't think you would do too well if you tried to drive them.
Vehicle.
Yeah, how tall's your truck?
The bike lanes are nice, though.
Yeah, that's great.
Great.
Yeah, that's all I have.
Um.
Any questions?
Yes, the hundred thousand you got from Core, is that specifically for the, uh, the heat pumps and the solar panels?
Yes, do you know? Yeah, it's a, it's an, it's about the electrification aspect of it, it's tied to those improvements.
I've, I've figured that, okay.
Anything else?
Well, as far as a clear update, Dover sent us this, uh, uh, thing about, uh, clean mobility and, uh, and such, did we all get a chance to read it? I did, and I, I have no questions regarding it, uh, all looks like goo, good stuff to me. About, uh, the EV drive and ride, and, um, um, emphasizing biking in town and all good stuff that we like to see.
And that probably the biggest news is the, that they're continuing to work with Kirk on charging stations for the police outbacks.
Well, if they're going to have EV police cars, they're going to have to have charging stations.
Yeah, so those will probably not be for general use, but in general, but I think there's also move, movement, I don't think it's gotten anywhere but to do more improvements to the one I could.
Okay. Beautiful.
I guess I have a question about that, um, what's the strategy for, like, where do people find this kind of information that this stuff is happening in general? Any idea?
I think Clear does try to have like a social media presence, I'm not sure what their other outreach is.
For the, like, I'd drive thing for the, like, all things that we're doing.
To, well, this one specifically, I'm just curious, because I miss tons of stuff like this, and I just wonder why I miss it.
Hopefully, I, it's in the, the town newsletter, which, um, I think you can sign up for some.
I think I'm on the town newsletter.
Uh, shuttlebutt too, so personal.
Oh, right, so newspapers, okay, I'll get more plugged in.
Yeah, I don't know if the Clear, um, events make it into the newsletter, but that's something I could actually, like, try to make a connection, see if we can't get some of that cross-communication going.
I'm sure Clear has a website, don't they?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Go there, it's not pushed out.
Yeah.
But that's, that calendar in the sopers sun is pretty thorough, usually.
I feel like that's my only source of finding things going on in town.
No, that's very smart, okay.
Okay, shall we move on to our action items? Preparing, uh, for the, uh, August nineteenth environmental board update to the Board of Trustees, where we tell them, uh, what we're up to. First of all, let me make sure, I'm, I'm assume I am going to make this presentation to the Board Trustees.
You can decide, you all can decide who wants to, and as many, I mean, if everyone wants to go, they're more than welcome to.
Well, I'm, we're hoping I get a lot, if I do it, I'm hoping to get a lot of moral support from you guys. Okay. So I will, I've, I'll guess I'll do it, being the chair, and, um, that's what this is all about. I handed this out, I, uh, I assume what I'm to report to them is, first of all, what our accomplishments have been in the, in the past year, and what our goals are for the future. And that's why I put together this list, which you will see is very short on accomplishments, but I have a few goals listed, um. Our excuse, the one I'm going to give, uh, on the accomplishments is turnover. Uh, I think I am the only person on this board who was here a year ago, and it's hard to get anything accomplished with that kind of turnover, so, uh, hasn't been a lot going on. Uh, first thing I listed was turf replacement, uh, which I think was the, uh, responsibility of Be Friendly. Uh, is that still going on? I, I see that, uh, Lisa McKenzie at the Third Street Center is, is saying she's involved with Be Friendly. I didn't know she was involved at the E.
There's definitely still grant money available, um, and the information is up on the Be Friendly website. Um, I don't know what the total fund expenditure looks like, but it's something I can get you.
Is the E-Board still involved in that? Because that was basically Hannah Hunt and, um, uh, Jane Hendricks doing that, and they're both gone.
Insofar as they're both gone, it, E-Board is still running that, I believe.
Okay.
I would say since they've left, nothing has happened.
Actually, I know that, I've talked to Hannah Hunt, and they actually are, like, her and, is it Dina?
Mm-hmm.
That they are, you know, like, they manage the emails that come through there, and I know that we are starting to coordinate of, an event with them, so I don't know how that management happens, but I think I saw it on our budget that we need to, that we probably need to be overseeing what the budgetary expenses are for that, but I think that they're physically still managing it. That makes sense, but maybe we should clarify that with Hannah Hunt.
Hannah Hunt left, she said that she was still going to maintain involvement with Be Friendly, so. I think she's doing that, but you all can still get invet, invested in it however you want to.
Right, but what are we responsible for, I guess, is the bottom line of, right, is the question? And what do we want to be responsible for?
Well, you say we're running it, what can we be running it when, when, when nothing's happening, I mean. I think I need to talk to Hannah Hunt. Yeah.
That's a great idea.
I'm under the impression that the grant money is for a year, and that was our major role, partnered with Clear, to get that approved, or to get that going for this year, which it is in place, so. I don't know if we have much more on our end beyond that, but.
And that year started in May, or?
I think in January.
In January, and does not roll over, so if we don't spend by the end of the year, it's gone?
I'm not sure on that.
Correct.
It was twenty-five hundred bucks, right?
Not roll over, but, um, the, we funded it again, and the grant matched it, same as last year, so this is the second year of it. Um, I believe there, if somebody just goes through the motions of getting the grant again, and did it come from Clear? I thought it was somebody different.
The state, I think, dispersed some level of money, and then I feel like, aren't you matching it from the water?
We're matching it from Water Fund. Okay, the money didn't come from Clear, I just meant us and Clear together.
Collaborated.
Yeah, to get bigger, yeah. Uh, yeah, so, you know, Water Funds matched that grant, so I think where your involvement could be is getting ready to get the grant out again next year, and make sure somebody at Be Friendly is processing the applications and doing the paperwork side of it, so. You guys can figure out where you want to divvy up those, those roles, I suppose.
Okay. Insofar as is one of our, like, three ongoing accomplishments, perhaps we should have someone on the board who is like liaison for the prog, program, and if Hannah Hunt ever returns, that's great, but in the meantime, we should, uh, maybe have one of us take on a little more responsibility there.
I'm happy to do that.
Okay, thanks, Beth.
Thanks, Brooke. You don't have a contact Hannah Hunt? Okay. Okay, the other item I mentioned was no idling signs, that was, uh, initiated by, uh, Patrick Hunter, I believe, and it's accomplished. We even got Wells Fargo to put a no-idling sign on their, uh, drive-through, so people don't idle their, uh, engines, their gas-burning engines while waiting for their money to come from the, the banks on these, uh, drive-throughs. And I think that's been accomplished in the last year.
Post office have one?
Huh?
And what I see is the post office is, a lot of people idling there.
Out in the parking lot?
Yeah.
Really?
We should just steal their car.
Had somebody waiting for somebody at the post office.
I've heard quite a few citizens' complaints about this issue as well, of just around-town people doing it, especially as it gets hot, people sitting in their cars.
Hmm.
With the AC on or whatever, um, and I don't know, yeah, what the, I guess, the que, what question would be if the code enforcement or something can remind people more, more strongly.
This is not enforceable, as far as I understand.
Really tricky, yeah.
We're just asking people really to, uh.
Yeah.
To turn off their engines while they're waiting. And, uh, since I have a hybrid, I don't have to worry about it, because I'm on the electric motor when I'm idling anyway. Okay, uh, we'll follow up with the post, with, uh, perhaps putting a no-idling sign at the post office somewhere.
They apparently do have a new postmaster who I think is a little bit more receptive to input than previously, but.
Mari?
Oh, he's been gone a long time now, uh, but, uh, I don't think he was the postmaster, he was just working, worked there. But, uh, yeah, we'll see, who knows? I know that it's been a struggle in the past to get anything done at the post office, as this landscaping can attest, obviously.
Okay. I'll follow up on that. In third accomplishment, accomplishment, uh, just like every year, we put on a wonderful dandelion day, and it was a great success. Lots of turnout, I think the vendors did very well, and I didn't hear any negative words about the dandelion day at all. Would you?
I have a question on, um, Hannah Hunt's report, or the board's report, I should say, but she mentions, or you guys mentioned, um, a, to coordinate a community learning tent at, um, dandelion days. Did that happen, or what did that look like?
I think those occurred from the stage this year, um, rather than in a specific tent.
Okay. I think it was a, a panel, right?
Yeah, there was a, a panel for, and I don't know what kind of feedback there was about that, but I think the idea was to try to get everybody to hear it instead of somebody who wanders into the tents, so.
Yeah, that was different, this year we didn't have a separate tent, we were up on the gazebo.
And was that, um, and what did you guys, I'm sorry I wasn't there, but what did you guys talk about?
I can't remember who the three, there were three eminences, I believe, that were on stage having a panel discussion. And I don't remember who it was.
I don't know, because I was in my three fifty Roaring Fork booth, and I was involved in that or.
Who coordinated the panelists?
Um, Kat Hardy, the organizer, I think, for the most part, so yeah, if you can reach out, she would.
What's her last name again?
Hardy, H-A-A-R-D-Y. Um, I can send you her contact.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to goals.
So, can I, can I ask a question about?
Or actually, sorry, uh, you can just email dandeliondayeightone six two three at gmail dot com. Hopefully she's checking, she might not be checking it now, but.
Okay, I think I actually have her contact. Um, so there were some other things that were listed here that, like, of accomplishments that maybe we met, but aren't taking enough credit for, I don't know, but, um, increased clean mobility opportunities in Carbondale? Like, that's what she has as our goals for twenty twenty-five?
She?
Well, that's what this document that is called Twenty Twenty-Five Priorities and the August twentieth, twenty twenty-four E-Board Update. So this is what was presented to the board last year, I would imagine, is that true? Who knows?
I don't know.
Um.
Who's she?
I think it's Hannah Hunt that put all this together, um, but it, it says, so it has this whole bullet of, um, increased clean mobility opportunities in Carbondale, and then there's an enhanced water conservation in Carbondale, and that's through Be Friendly, um, update UDC to incorporate water-wise standards. That would be the, you know, do we do that? No, okay, um, support path to net zero for buildings.
I mean, we did pass new building codes, it was not a hundred percent victory for the E-Board, I would say, in terms of these goals here that Fred's laid out under building codes there.
Uh-huh.
Um, and maybe in some ways a defeat if, because now that we have passed new building codes, we're probably less incl- inclined to take it up immediately again, um, but, uh, I don't, I think, I, I, it's hard for me to say, be, without being an expert on it, but I, I would say s, some of the experts would say that we have improved, uh, energy efficiency of new buildings anyway, and by conforming to more widespread codes, we've made it easier for people to comply with the, with the goals.
Yes.
Um, so.
Okay, um, and then there's something about reduced single-use plastic in town, leveraging the plastic bag refund? Or the plastic bag tax fund?
Some discussion.
Yeah, that's still something that we need to decide on, I think, is what to do with, uh, we, I don't know if we've gotten a concrete number, thirty thousand dollars has been thrown around, but, um, I don't, I don't know if anyone's officially found that figure. But that's what, I think the first meeting that you were at, um, is it Alyssa Rendell? Yeah. Um, gave a, was talking from Zero, Evergreen Zero Waste, and around her, her suggestions, what we do with that.
Oh, so that's connect, that's where that money comes from?
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, I was actually hoping to add that as an action item, I feel like that's the. I was actually hoping to add that as an action item. I feel like that's the biggest opportunity we have in front of us. And insofar as a pot of money exists and we could input on how to spend it. Um, we we don't have to get into that now, but I think we should keep that ball moving.
Okay, and then my last comment, just because I want to make sure that we're looking at all of these things that were outlined last year. Is the establish a long term direction for climate action and resilience in Carbondale. And we did get that V caps report. Filed, so that could be an accomplishment if we wanted to add that.
What have we done with the V caps report?
Well, it com- got completed, right? And so now we can figure out what we want to do with it. True?
True, but Gwen kind of did that. We didn't do it, did we?
Well, we had paid her to do it.
To your broader point there, Beth, I I was reading through the climate action plan um again in a bit more detail. And I did notice one thing here. I think this originally twenty seventeen and no one on the author's list is uh in the room right now, but. Uh at a minimum, town of Carbondale will perform a comprehensive update of community emission and inventory every four years. And a progress report on emissions from energy use will be performed annually. Um, I can't find those published if they're done, and I'm not sure if that's our responsibility or if we should make that our responsibility.
Always gonna work on that, maybe. Think that was in their work plan.
Okay. So I feel like that it would then wa- was it twenty twenty one one?
That sounds about right is when they last presented on it. Yeah, and I don't think, I don't think there's been a one sense. It's a tricky.
Yeah.
Number to get.
Absolutely, yeah.
Um, the bag fund uh had a beginning balance this year of eighty thousand dollars. Um, and was expected to have a thirty five thousand dollar sort of revenue and. Spend twenty five thousand dollars to end with ninety thousand dollars at the end of the year. So. I would assume that twenty five to thirty thousand dollars is dedicated for yard waste and enter and other waste events. Um, so yeah, the that would leave roughly forty thousand dollars in that.
Do we know if that ten thousand dollar surplus is expected to be a pretty annual recurring?
No, it was thought that of thought that it was a one time thing and I'm not, I don't know if they've really got to the bottom of why. Why we had such a surplus um necessarily.
But we need to, it's not gonna fluctuate. It's not gonna, we're not gonna add a ton to it so that we need to make sure that we are covering. Looking out so that we can cover the yard waste event that we do and.
Yeah, so that's probably where you get down to about thirty thousand dollars to give yourself some cushion in terms of. Making sure that fund stays solvent.
So is it specifically have to be used for reducing waste?
Yeah.
Okay.
Like to kick off the goal section here though, Fred, like choosing how we spend that money, even if it's a thirty K surplus or even a little bit more. That seems like one of the big goals for this next year. The well taking fruit, the best opportunity to spend that money.
Any ideas?
Well, the last meeting I, it sounded like you were sort of moving towards a maybe a low income compost trial. Program with evergreen zero wastes. Um, and that was like a six month trial, I think. But I don't, there was no decision made, so.
One big pile.
I think she was dissuaded from doing it that way. She was looking more for helping folks to get started in the program.
So that she could oversee um the management of it and the education of the. The customer.
Ones have a lot of issues with contamination and accountability thereof. Um, I think that was one of her concerns. And then uh, yeah, just the management of it and keeping it secure from.
Mandatory commercial composting, define mandatory. Is it, everybody has to have the ability to compost, like every commercial business has to have a compost container? Whether they use it or not is up to them or you fine people for not composting.
I would think fine people for not composting.
Got you. And you really don't want to do that for commerc- you you want to start with restaurants. Because commercial businesses, it also encompasses any building eight or more units. So every multifamily building will have this, you start finding people, short term rentals and all the things that go into people contaminating compost.
So you know, you used the wrong word, then I was thinking of restaurants.
Yeah, so it should be. Anybody who serves food has a has a license to serve food.
Okay. Yeah, I understand that's the way it is in Aspen.
Well, they're going to commercial. It's gonna roll out. It's gonna be. It's gonna be interesting to see how this goes. Because again, they haven't thought about all the short term rentals and. And because again, anything over eight units is price for law, commercial business. And if you start finding people for throwing banana peels on a short term rental, how's that gonna go?
Is there a way to distinguish between? No, interesting. That's too bad.
You know, and the fines are punitive.
I think that was another potential idea was maybe financial support for. For commercial composting or res- restaurant composting. If you could give them fans or whatever.
Anybody who wants to start even a commercial business, it'll help you with the first three months.
Right.
Let you try.
Yeah, I think the ideas I've heard so far is like the trial for everyone, some sort of median income with maybe more permanent support. More permanent ongoing subsidy for a certain number of uh recipients there. And then Alyssa really liked the idea of working with an H O A. Or some sort to grab a large group at once. Um, I don't know if there's a ton of H O As in town, that would be super suitable for that, but. If anyone has any ideas there, I was gonna propose maybe, I think, Ally, the. Two people is the safest number that can congregate without getting into records laws. So I was gonna suggest maybe two people. Sit down for an hour or two at bonfire and sketch out some ideas here and then maybe come to. Broader group with a a white paper proposal of some sort, or maybe two that that we could vote on.
Yeah, that sounds good. I think what Ally was saying though is if we wanted to. Meet a bonfire with more than two people, all we have to do is submit it to her and she posts it twenty four hours ahead of time. So if we schedule a meeting and it's like. We're gonna meet at bonfire at ten o'clock on Tuesday, blah, blah, blah. We can all be there or a portion of us can. It just can't not be public.
You have to take notes.
The, so. It would be recommended that in order to not take minutes, um that you don't make any decisions, any motions or anything there. So you could have like a little work session and then bring the information back to the greater meeting. Discuss it and then, you know, make an action if you want to approve something. Um, otherwise, if you do want to. Make a motion outside of this regular meeting, it would. I would need to be there or it would need to be here or some somehow that we can actually um get it out to the public. So we could post anything and not, and we can just do this with two people to keep it simple, but. If we want to do a work session, we can post it as a work session. And then then nobody's expecting minutes and everything formal gets presented here.
Correct.
Got it.
So we would be pre- preparing something to present to the Board of Trustees for the next.
Preparing something to present to this meeting.
Right, right. And then from there it would go to the Board of Trustees. How frequently do we present to the Board of Trustees?
Once a year.
Cause you're doing that.
Yes, in August.
So basically would be preparing for something that would be presenting in a ye- year, correct?
No, I think you're, I think you're having two conversations. Beth is talking about having a work session about the bag fund money. So if you wanted to get that ball rolling a little bit faster, um having a work session to discuss that in advance of the regular E board meeting. And then the this greater conversation about the Board of Trustee update. I would fall into that.
Yeah, I feel, I feel like we should zoom out of this conversation right now and talk more about the Board of Trustees. But then maybe a second action item is like, let's talk about putting together a plan that then we can discuss in the next uh. E board meeting.
And I don't think it has to be, I mean, if you come up with a a specific agenda item that you want to put in front of the Board of Trustees, it doesn't have to be part of this. So that could conceivably be happening in the budget, you know, um budget planning that. It commences in August and goes through October, basically, so.
But I I do think a good goal to bring to the town board now in this August meeting is like deciding how this money can be best spent.
Let me make sure I understand. Are we suggesting that part of it be spent for financial support for restaurants to do composting?
I I don't think we have a specific plan yet for how to spend the money, but we're trying to put together a working session to come up with a proposal that then we can discuss and vote on.
I don't, I don't think we have another E board meeting before that meeting, though, do we?
No, we don't.
So it would have to happen tonight.
But uh uh I'm saying I don't believe we need the full proposal now, just saying, one of our goals is to decide how this money is spent for the next year.
Okay.
Oh, I think you're gonna clarify what I want clarified.
This idea was originally broached by uh by Erica Sparhawk. So I think um it's okay for us to have a little bit of a conversation about this at the. At the overall update and maybe get some idea of, you know, hopefully, yeah. Um, but I I guess if it's totally unsketched out by then, then it's gonna be tricky, but.
Yeah, sure.
But I think the idea is that we can sketch it out in a working session and then present some options and let. I don't.
It would kind of have to bypass, they wouldn't, you wouldn't have another meeting for this group, though.
Right. And then, but you were saying, somebody just said clarified that we can bring stuff. Like we can bring it in September to them and be like, will you, this is an agenda item, will you guys approve this? So it's not pressured.
It won't be ready, but I was just trying to clarify.
Ready for the August Board of Trustees meeting, yeah.
Okay, so. I will say that we need to figure out what to do with the bag beat fund. And uh some ideas we've talked about are to help people get started composting. And uh to uh provide financial support for restaurants to get started composting. Okay. Is there, are we off that now? Can I move on back to the building codes? Chris, are you saying all those ideas about building codes are out the window because we. Just have new building codes and we won't be reviewing them again for how many years?
I I can't say no, I can't say never, but uh but I think. Um, yeah, it's gonna be tricky to to have all those things in for sure. But I think you should bring it up and talk about it again at the August meeting and I don't, I don't think it's hurts to be that you're kind of the body that. Is ta- you know, you're the only sort of constituent body that wants to, you know, push, push this. So I think it should be. Um, something to talk about for sure.
It may be aspirational, but where we want to get to.
I think it's also fair to voice your disappointment that these weren't included in the new building codes that were passed.
The thing that I've sort of been homing in on that I don't, I'm not, I don't, that I think we did change with the, with the um. New building codes was a detaching the fee structure from the actual code. So previously, a lot of the fees that were levied on construction projects were written into the code, so they couldn't be adjusted on an annual basis. So um now that it's a detached thing, it's something that can be adjusted each year. And also potentially gives within, within a certain amount of re- reasonable. Level you could, I think, add some level of extra fee to gassed hookups. Um, which is one route to disincentivize.
Okay.
Quick question.
See, or conversely, reduce fees on uh heat pumps.
Of those, like if we were to push for one, it seems like that first one is low hanging fruit. Is that? Is there a way to to just kind of do one thing? Or is it looking at all the building codes all over again?
No, I think it's possible to do one thing and I think some of this stuff is still in the path to net zero. So I think it's worth having the conversation. And I, yeah, I do believe there was a date set in that path to net zero that did anticipate this eventuality. And I think it maybe was a thing that would descend through certain building sizes, so houses over. A certain square footage would be the first to be forced into this, co- complying with this. And then, you know, ADUs and small, smaller, lower in, lower income projects. Would be um more. More, would have a longer time period to comply.
That's cool. And then is the path to net zero, where can I find that?
I can find it probably and send it to you. I, it's in definitely in minutes from the past, from past board meetings. And I believe the E board has looked at it too, but I don't remember what date that would have been.
I mean, that sounds like something along like what Sam was talking about with the climate action plan. It seems like that's something that we should keep tabs on and make sure that we're still keeping people's feet to the fire about that.
Yeah. Will you email me about that or something? Um, so I remember.
Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and uh mention these uh building code items. Understanding that I, we don't expect this to happen anytime soon since the building codes were just set. But looking ahead to the future, we still have these things on our mind. Right, electrification of town hall. I have some questions for Sam and Scott about that. Uh, are we replacing the roof on town hall or fixing it?
I don't know.
I don't believe that's been fully determined yet.
Okay. Cause I'm.
That project hasn't necessarily gotten off the ground. We know that it needs to be done. I think we just need resources to be able to enact some of these items.
Okay. Cause I'm one of these, I I hate the fact that we've become a throwaway society. Nothing gets fixed anymore. Every, you just throw it away and buy a new one. And I'd hate to see uh that done with the 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 town hall roof. Just my opinion on that. Has it all been uh looked at um for these mini, one of these mini splits? Put in the uh, uh the ceiling of the, of the uh. Town hall.
I believe, I believe it's been looked at and I believe it's larger than a mini split. I think, I think this is a forced air building. Um, so I think they were looking at a larger like forced air heat pump.
Okay.
But I, don't quote me on that. I I, that was my, that's my intuition on what they were looking at, but. Um, I can follow up and get specific details. Um, but for, I I think for what your recommendations to the board is continue to push on electrification. And I guess try to get that project off the ground, right? Um, I believe you, you have, you already have the backing to progress that direction. I think it's just prioritizing it.
It's been talked about for a long time.
I don't know if you know this, but we have a serious lack of resources to push on all the projects that we want to get done.
Okay, well, go ahead.
Part of, part of your conversation around that is to. Include Sam's proposal, right? Okay, just making sure you're clear on that.
Looking at the path to net zero, it does say for twenty twenty three retrofit town hall with H pump HVAC system. Looking at the path to net zero, it does say for twenty twenty-three retrofit town hall with H pump HVAC system. Um, so either that already happened or we're behind on it, um, and yeah, serious lack of resources, totally understood.
Yeah, but I believe we also received a significant grant that was for both the pool and for town hall. Electrification, and I'm not sure if there was required. Or if it's been all diverted to the pool, or if it's, if some of it was, was actually specifically earmarked for.
Grant from who?
From the state.
Okay.
I would suggest, Fred, that you can present to the, to the board that. Sam has done significant work that can be presented to. Most likely, it's the building official that will be running that project whenever it gets going. And you'll be able to take that information and bring it to him and help. Drive that progress forward, so I think you could, you could tell the board that, I think that's, that's something significant, I'd, I'd move that out of goals into. Like, it's not quite an accomplishment, cause you haven't done it yet, but you, you will be able to do that.
Yes. Do you have your proposal written down somewhere?
Yeah, it, it should be in the meeting minutes.
Okay.
Go to a last meeting at least.
All right.
Yeah, it's um, it should be in the packet of.
Okay.
The last meeting.
I'll save that and um. And definitely refer to that when my, my presentation.
It, it does seem though like electrification of town hall is one of the low hanging fruit. It, I, I understand the lack of resources, but it's also one of the things that we have like. Most immediate control over, you know, we're not trying to change people's behaviors, we're just trying to change it ourselves, and so. I think a goal for this next year should be to continue to advocate for that and find opportunities. It seems like maybe there is money already, if there's not, maybe we can look at grant opportunities, um, as the board, it's a place where we could step in.
Okay.
Scott, when you say, so, I'm sorry, Doug.
Might also start with that.
Yeah.
Before you get into building codes. I'll electrify this before you ask other people to do it.
No, definitely.
Scott, when you say lack of resources, is it people or money or both?
Yeah, the, the money, the person that would um run this project also just rewrote all the building codes. And is also reviewing every single building permit that runs through this town.
Yeah. All one person.
Town is sixty-five hundred people. So maybe there is some argument to be for, is there a outside entity that could project manage or something, I don't know. Um, what, what's the cost around that, I don't know.
And that's where the new town manager comes in, with the public-private partnerships.
Or, you know, I don't know if Clear could potentially take it on in some manner, or figure out how to, who could take it on or some things.
Yeah, and it doesn't seem like the building official, it's, has to run internal town construction project. I wouldn't imagine that he would PM everything, it's the same thing, I, I don't project manage everything specifically, but. I lead the projects, right, and he would be the same.
Okay.
I would suggest that. The, the role that you guys can have most immediately is just getting, keeping it in attention, right? The pool is taking up a lot of the board's attention, so it's just, you, you gotta be the mosquito in the ear a little bit. Don't forget about this, we want that done. And then come to the next meeting and say, don't forget about this, we want this done, you know, this, that kinda stuff.
And kudos on the pool while we're at it, while we're being the mosquito, right?
Those, those guys, they.
As we're.
Oh, yeah, you're telling them kudos.
Yeah.
Yes.
And I don't know, yeah, who, but I, I am now curious if, if there is grant money sitting somewhere that we need to spend on this too, so. And I'm not sure who can.
Maybe with the follow-up.
If you, yeah, if, if you can find, I don't know if you can find that or not, but, yeah, I can, I can check in on it, okay.
All right, we're ready to move on. Uh, discourage pesticide and hu- herbicide use, we've done that uh with Eric Bremlinger. Particularly in his efforts to get rid of the Canadian thistle. Which I understand they found a way to do that without pesticides, and that's wonderful. But as far as uh our future goals, we'll continue to uh monitor that and uh stay on top of it.
Do you know, how much input did you guys have with Eric on his weed management plan? Could you move that into the accomplishment realm? Like, he developed that weed management plan, and I imagine that you guys had.
Yeah, he presented that to this board.
He sure did.
But you're talking maybe more amongst the general populace. I would say it's in both accomplishments and goals, I think dandelion day, of course, is. All about not using pesticides, that's what, what initiated the idea in the first place. Um, and then, yeah, that weed, at least in the town, in the town's perspective, Eric has really worked hard to. Figure out how not to use pesticides, so. I think it is as much an accomplishment as a goal.
Okay, then we'll listen as such.
And I think what's her name uh has been uh from, oh gosh. Has been looking at the nature park in particular with uh.
The lady from Durango?
Well, yeah, um, I can't remember what.
I can't remember her name now either.
Anyway, um, so that, and that was a step forward.
Katrina.
Yeah.
Katrina something.
Yeah. And I think, and he, and Eric continues to investigate whether goats are an option, it's pretty expensive and. And you have to close the park essentially for, while they're there, so. Those have been the hiccups in. Putting that out as a thing, but. Maybe you could close the park in segments or something, I don't know.
Okay.
And there will be, I mean, there's gonna be a recreation master plan. Um, that's supposedly gonna happen next year, so I think I would also maybe mention that the E board would like to be. Apprised of what's in that and have some input into what their, what the recreation board's priorities are.
We'll do that. All right, uh, an all-electric fleet of town vehicles, uh, we're going to get some. Police cars, I understand, and uh. As our, there are plans in the future for trucks and uh other.
We already have one, two, one truck, one F one fifty Lightning.
At least two. F one fifty Lightnings.
So it could be part of accomplishments as well.
Great point. Yeah, you, you guys put it on that.
Definitely, it gets trickier the more, and I think the, and also the Parks and Rec has gone to a lot of electric. Mowing equipment and whacking equipment, et cetera.
I noticed that the other day, I was like, that is so cool.
I believe they've gone almost wholly to.
But an all-electric fleet at this point is definitely out of reach, especially when it comes to a road grader or. Really big equipment is just not there technologically, really, or especially uh price-wise.
I mean, eve- even our heavy-duty pickup trucks, there's no EV um substitute for those yet. We have, uh, you, just for example, utilities, we have. We have eight one-ton pickups that run around with like twenty-five hundred pounds of static load. Like, there's nothing that can haul that.
Okay.
So hopefully it's coming, I mean, and when it, when it does, well, it'll get planned in with our replacement schedule.
So as far as um. What we'll push for will be uh more electric vehicles, a fully. Uh, EV uh police car fleet and uh smaller pickups.
Yeah, I mean, I, I wouldn't even define it, just say, to the extent practicable.
Yeah.
Replace with electric vehicles.
Right.
Any, any option that you can.
And do you think?
Keep an eye on staff that we actually do it.
Yeah, or, yeah, and like, I don't know if there are. Yeah, ways to encourage the right, right sizing of vehicles, I guess, for the task of some, I assume probably there's plenty of occasions when the one-ton pickup goes out to do something that the. F one fifty probably can handle. But I, but I mean, that's getting a little bit nitpicky with staff at that point.
Okay.
But that's just a nice encouragement, even though it's not mandatory, it's just making people like, oh, let's think twice about this.
Right, um.
Oh, the other one last thing I might mention is may potentially pushing on the downtowner. Going in electric.
They asked about that, yeah.
Um, cause those are just leased vans at this point, and so if it gets truly made permanent and. At that point, it might be, it'll be a question whether it's worth it to actually buy vehicles or what at that point, and. So that's a question of, are there, is there a good vehicle that exists out there that can handle? Or could be leased, yeah.
When is that uh decision taking place?
That's part of the budget process, so, um, yeah. I believe that contract would be renewed as essentially. It would be, it would be planned into the budget and then it would be renewed, I think, I think it was officially renewed in January or something, February or something, but. Maybe wrong.
Okay, so uh. It would be nice, and I understand Rafta has eight electric buses that operate in Aspen only. Would be nice if one of them was the circulator.
But yeah, there's obviously charging infrastructure needs to happen to that, so.
Do they need a special charger?
Yes.
The buses?
If you've been to the Aspen Park, uh, Ruby Park, you might have noticed they installed this super high-tech looking.
Oh, yeah.
Thing that.
So just so you know, that was my project in Aspen before I came here.
Oh, yeah.
How much did that cost?
A lot, I think the equipment was five hundred thousand.
They, they kill a lot or something?
Oh, I don't remember off the top of my head, it was a. The uh bus charge would be ten to eighty percent in twenty minutes. It was a ton of power. It, it got, each charger has its own full, fully loaded transformer, like this big as you can get. On the ground.
Isn't that like space between the alley and the, and the bus parking?
What's that?
In the space between the alley and the bus parking?
Yeah, that was unfortunate, I, I handed it off to come here, but, um, so I didn't get to fit, see it finished, but, uh, yeah, that was. A, a lot of the layout challenges that we had at the time.
How much range does the bus get, do you know?
I don't recall, they didn't really talk about range as much as hours, just the way that buses circulate.
How was the cost share between Aspen and Rafta for that?
It was, I think Rafta took on the majority of that. You're making me think about things more than two years ago, I haven't, haven't thought about these things in a while.
The power came from Holy Cross, right?
Uh, city electric.
Oh, okay, what percentage renewable are they?
Hundred percent.
That's good. Okay.
Anyhow, uh, but yes, for pushing on that kinda stuff, that's probably outside of town's purview. Push on Rafta and stuff, but I think the circuit, or the downtowner is, I think, within your target.
Okay.
Just to clarify something, are, do we still have a circulator, or is it just the downtowner now?
Still have a circulator.
Both, okay, good.
All right, moving on to um. Uh, we already covered lawn and gar- uh garden turf replacement. As part of the accomplishments and uh. Uh, I will have to check with Hannah Hunt to see what the plant, their plans are for the future, cause I just don't know. Anybody in here know what they're planning on doing, I hear. On the radio that they're still working on down at the Thompson House. Uh, on replacing the turf down there and. But I'm, they could be done with that by now for all I know.
I think they did that one project, but there's obviously plenty more turf.
Yeah.
Around there, or all over town, but.
I've been hearing some recently about like a Carmel Beautification Club or something of that sort. I think it's just a bunch of folks getting together and trying to clean things up, but maybe there's some opportunity there for. Hey, if you wanna do this at a more commercial place, then you can get the consent of the owner, that uh, we could find funding there, I don't know.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, and on the bee-friendly site, there is a turf replacement application. Um, and an irrigation audit rebate. Which is new, so that's interesting, um. But that's all I see, as far as like, there's no new, oh wait, here's the projects.
I think Lisa McKenzie's involved in that now. Cause I've been getting some emails from her about that, so. I don't know, I'll have to look into it.
Oh, and then there's the Sobres Park Bridge, oh, that was twenty twenty-three. Okay, that's it.
Okay, uh, we already talked about mandatory composting. Um, it's something we're going to ask for, uh, restaurants only. And um, um, uh, fines will be involved. Uh. Moving on to monitoring, the things we should be monitoring, go ahead.
Sorry, I think that we said we were gonna wait before we. Made um a decision on what we were doing with the composting. Do we wanna throw that into a more general category of waste reduction with the bag tax fund, and then. These are the things that we are possibly leaning towards is helping with um restaurant composting and. The, and increasing resident composting.
I missed, I thought we were going to have with mandatory uh composting.
Okay.
For restaurants, for restaurants.
I, I feel like if that's a proposal we wanna make, we should draft specifically what we mean on some sort of document and then vote on it.
Sure, you wanna do that right now?
I, yeah, I will, how about we get through the Environmental Forward and Action Goals document here first, but I thought. Well, we had agreed about earlier with just one goal is to decide how to spend and then, you know, oversee the spending of this bag fund.
To reduce weight with the goal of reducing waste, and then we can decide more thoroughly about like. What does that look like and what's gonna be effective to implement?
So. Um, mandatory things, that's something you can do on the fly.
Yeah, and to your point earlier, Doug, like, I think the details really matter with these things, and so we should write down what some of those details are.
And looking at what Aspen did and how much it cost them and what the impact was on. Like, how did they roll that out so that it's actually effective?
Who's going to monitor, who's gonna issue the fund?
Right. And I, I think that's.
So there's a whole host of factors that need to be hashed out before you get down.
Yeah, and I think inviting and supporting people as restaurants in doing that, because they're already so maxed out with. Everything they're trying to do to keep their doors open, that we really need to come up with a strategy that is. Um, supportive and helpful and provide the education and training so that it's executed well.
My guess is most of the restaurants currently compost, or I don't know. My guess is you're, you're about fifty percent.
That's great.
You know, better than that, I bet.
A- and that's just where I think that's like one idea of many of how this money could be sent.
Hmm, okay, so we'll say that we're going to help uh. Um, restaurants uh financially to uh with the bag bun for money. Well, here's where it gets tricky, so if somebody's been composting for five years, a restaurant that's going, it's, it's doing fine. We're focusing on the ones that don't. That's what you wanna say. Okay.
But I think what we're saying is we're gonna shelf that whole conversation. Until a further presentation to the Board of Trustees. And we'll give an all-encompassing suggestion around compost and what to do with the bag fee money related to that.
Right, so the goal is the bag fee is figuring out how to reduce waste. In and increase composting in Carbondale with Bag Fee Fund, and we're gonna do, create a proposal to do that, right?
And I don't think it, things, not everything has to be fully baked for this, I mean, things can be a conversation too, I think, and I think Fred's point of. Maybe there are sticks as well as carrots that can be included in, in the. Ultimately, I think it's just starting the conversation, and we're not expecting that this is gonna go in this year's budget or. In, it's prob- yeah, it would probably be next year at best that we'd get to actually something. You know, some sort of ordinance or something like that, but, but I think you can bring it up and, and still. Talk about, we'll, we'll incentivize you, but if you're not willing to come along with this, we might start penalizing you too, so.
Alright. Kind of sounds to me, I will bring up, when I bring up the bag fee mu- uh money and what we're planning on doing now. One of the things I will mention we're going to do is to uh help. Uh, uh restaurants who aren't currently composting, get involved in a compost program. Okay. That's what I'll do.
Perfect, thank you.
Alright, moving on to uh monitoring uh environmental pollution. Um, that was, I pulled that one out of the original description of what this board was gonna, supposed to be about. But uh, any environmental pollution that we see like idling or. Or things like that, we should monitor and report.
I think Clear does have it in their work plan for this year to do a admissions assessment, and I, so I don't know, and I'm not sure if they. Where they are on that, um, but I guess encouraging us to continue to. See where they are with that, I guess, except I think, think that would be in their court mostly.
Is there um, is there someone at Clear I should speak to about that?
I mean, I would just start with Lauren.
Okay. Um, there's some pretty cool remote sensing data sets now, so all satellite derivatives for both CO2 and methane. And so, I mean, it would be cool to get more comprehensive picture and actually try and come up with what some numbers are and maybe what the sources are. Rather than um focusing on maybe what's most immediately observable.
Okay.
But they'll be able to go back in time on those things, or it's.
Uh, about twenty fifteen, it's about when some of those data sources start, yeah.
And water quality, I do believe the Royford Conservancy has, does a fair amount of work on river quality mon- monitoring. But I don't, I don't really know what the specifics are of that.
Well. We have Scott for water quality.
Town water, yeah, it's a different.
Town water.
And we are required to do all kinds of testing for that.
Yeah, that's not something you guys can really impact in terms of our drinking water, but. Um, there's something else that you see for water quality that. You wanna present or push on the board about, definitely.
This is just something we're gonna monitor, you know, and, and keep track of. And you can do that for us. Okay, community outreach. Uh, encourage, so. This is just like getting out in the community, outside of the meeting, getting onto the community and encouraging people. To do things. Uh, Clear is doing that some, somewhat with their, their home evaluations. And uh I think we can do some of that on our own too. Uh, encourage cons- uh solar installations. Solar's likely to go up in price with uh restriction on uh the trade war that's going on. But uh, people have to be convinced that in the long term, they're gonna save money. Because of uh the power bills will disappear. And in fact, they'll be feeding power back into the grid, which they will get paid for, so. You know, using these kind of arguments that we all know, uh discouraging pesticide, herbicide use, uh. Not only on the part of uh, of the town, of Parks and Rec. But uh people's use in their own yard. Uh, encourage electric vehicle use. Again, the price of that is probably gonna, probably gonna go up, cause the, the tax credits are disappearing. But every time you go pay a, a gas station, it should go ka-ching, I'm saving the. A whole bunch of money here by not having to fill up.
That may be one place, I, I don't know what the, on this whole community outreach thing, I know the previous. Um, iteration of this board did, I, seemed to be initiating a lot of, I don't know where it got to, but initiating a lot of work on communications and. A communications plan for the year, and how does the board spend any advertising money or those kinds of things? Um, and I, I do think maybe if there is money in, in the budget, it might be worth. Spending some money on, on letting people know that all of these EV credits do expire in October, so if it's, you wanna buy an EV, this is the summer to do it. Basically, and um, there's, they're still there for the time being.
Is that the same with solar panel installation too?
That's what I was gonna say, yeah.
Thirty percent ITC is, yeah, but there's still a thirty percent state ITC, um, and I think, I, I was gonna bring this up for town stuff. I think for the, the final provision in the bill is you really just have to like start work on any project by, I believe, October, and that's been decided. That defined pretty loosely, um, like shuffle in the ground is okay, um, so if there's anything where we potentially would wanna grab that.
And what about residential heat pump stuff, if?
I think that's all gone.
Okay.
I believe, yeah. I'd double check on that one, but pretty sure.
I think, I think you're right.
That Clear update was pretty encouraging in that they had forty-six contractors at their workshop about heat pumps, so. Hopefully that's, you know, something that's coming along in the, in the private sector without a whole lot more, you know. Quick government push.
And again, great state incentives still exist for electrification.
Robert, go ahead.
Oh, just that I had talked to um SJ about um the community outreach. Communications plan that she came up with, and she's gonna hand that off to me, and I will look at it and. Um, we can put that on the meeting agenda at some point in time.
Sure.
Um, to discuss that, but, but if there's anything, it's October. September, we should push that out sooner than. We actually have time to have it on the schedule. Anyway, I'll, I'll email you guys. I'll look at what she has up and, and email that, but it's like if we wanna encourage people to. Do the things that are still available before October, it seems like that needs to start now.
Okay, could you uh forward that to me?
Yes.
Well, that's something I think I should look at before I make my presentation in August.
I'll put it in the, I'll forward it to you, I'll forward it to everybody, like a specific link, but I'll also put it in that shared Google Drive. So that we have access to it.
Are we gonna use that?
I'm using it, not the, not the Google Meets thing for conversations, but for document collection.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, for document preservation, I think that's fine, as long as there's not conversation happening in there, which I don't.
I don't think you can.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's our tricky way around.
Okay, water conservation, oh. I've been watering, um, because my landlord's ditch water pump wasn't working, I've been watering my garden with uh. Not town water, and I feel terrible about doing that, I just wanna have a garden.
You're the one that did it to me.
Encourage people not to do that, and, and encourage recycling and composting, which we've talked to uh about before. Uh, getting, maybe giving some people some financial help to get a composting program together, so. Anyway, that's what I put down, and I would en- encourage you all to uh. Uh, suggest deletions or additions to this list. So I can include this to the presentation of uh, I'm gonna make to the board. Uh, Ally, how long of uh speech should I figure on giving?
Maybe like an hour conversation?
An hour?
It, well, I think they allot, I'm not sure, I'm not sure how, how long those conversations tend to go depending on the board's presentation.
Okay.
I think sometimes.
Talk to Ben.
But Chris generally like, I don't know.
Is it also clear, uh, uh doing this, and also doing in, at the meeting or not, is it just the E Board?
I don't know.
I'll talk, I'll talk to Ben.
One suggestion, Fred, if, if it would help, um, is that maybe we can each take on like different pieces of this? And so that, you know, you don't have to, if it is that long, like that we can all kind of. Chime in on some sort of thing that we're focused on.
Okay.
You know, and then Sam can talk about the electrification of town hall and, you know, like specifics like that, and I can bring the bee-friendly stuff and. Dandelion Day stuff or communication stuff.
Relegate.
So on. Compost.
It's not a set time, it's, you know, as long as you guys wanna be there and as much information you have to share with them.
I will relegate. Okay. Okay, any additions or uh? Subtractions uh? Guys wanna make? This list? Alright, we'll u- use this as a working document. And uh.
I don't know, the only other thing might be, I, I guess if, I don't know if Gwen's thing is at all relevant, if that needs to be. Is she, she's not presenting it to the board this year?
Beg your pardon?
Gwen's thing that's going on concurrently right now?
Oh, yeah. I don't know, he's gonna, I, I asked her to make a tape of it and send that tape to the board.
Okay.
But uh I don't know what she's gonna do.
Okay.
Okay, so that uh takes care of that, the information-only line item we've already covered, that's solar at town hall. And uh you're gonna give, oh, I'm gonna look in the m- meeting minutes and get your presentation on that. And when we do go before the Board of Trustees, I'll ask you to speak on that subject.
Yeah, absolutely.
What's the time, what's the time of that meeting? When is that one?
It's a six o'clock meeting, I don't know what time yours plotted for, but.
What date is it? Oh, it's an hour meeting, okay.
It's the eighth, isn't it?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth?
The eighteenth, or no, it's the nineteenth, it's a Tuesday, it's their work session.
Was it the day after our? Meeting, when's our next meeting?
The twelfth, wait, hang on, it might.
I thought you told me it was the eighth.
Healer Board meeting on the fifth. Is that right? The every other week thing.
I think it's in the email that.
Do you have a regular meeting?
There's no meetings shown.
Regular work session, the twelfth is, or the regular meeting, the twelfth would be the work session, correct?
The regular meeting's the twelfth and the twenty-sixth, and the work session's the nineteenth.
Okay.
Would be ideal if it was the nineteenth and then y'all could meet one day, the day before. And have had all of your composting research. Slash town, more town hall stuff slash energy monitoring.
And just our, kind of our presentation dialed so that we have another day to talk about it?
Yeah, I guess I'll have to check back and make sure that that's the day it's actually.
Glad you all are talking about dates, cause I just realized that I'm gonna be on vacation, so I'm gonna miss it all. Sorry.
Thank you for your support.
Date that we said it was?
We think it's the night, Tuesday, the nineteenth.
The nineteenth.
Ally's confirming, yeah.
We're meeting on the eighteenth.
There is a work session on the nineteenth, I assume that's the one. Yes, you are meeting on the eighteenth.
Okay, so we will meet before hand, okay, good. I think we better be ready before then, though.
So do we wanna schedule a bonfire meeting to discuss? The bag fee before our meeting on the eighteenth?
I think that would be good. Sometime next week, maybe? I mean, I, it's difficult to get five people in one room together, so we all can't make it. That's also okay.
Who's most excited about being part of that?
I think Doug's expertise would be great.
Okay.
Okay, next week?
Yeah.
That works for me.
You call it.
Perfect.
Do that.
Look at you guys getting all ambitious.
Hey, Tuesday, one o'clock at the bar.
Ten o'clock.
The twenty ninth, okay, I'm gonna go ahead and post that meeting for you guys, so you don't have to worry about it.
Exactly.
Bonfire.
Okay.
Just make sure, don't make any motions, just discussion to bring back to this meeting. Good.
Just, well, I, I can, or I might text or email Erica, I know she kind of got the ball rolling, she may wanna come to that. Potentially, so.
What are you suggesting, that we do that, or are you suggesting that you're gonna do that?
Well, unless you want me to. I don't care. I can just text her and ask her if she's interested, I guess, if that works, okay.
Okay, anybody else have any other issues they wanna bring up? I move, we adjourn. All those in favor? Hi.